What's going on family? It's your brother Divine Prospect, Kingdom Harbinger Ministries. I know, I know, it's been a long time. I shouldn't have left you without some more content to step to it. I know, I know. I know family, so what's going on man? A long time no speak, haven't seen y'all in some time. I'm just here to catch up with y'all real briefly. Got about thirty minutes to do a quick check-in. You know, give you some time to interact, see my face, make sure that I'm okay, am I locked up in a dungeon somewhere? Or ain't got me in a prison somewhere, or you know what I'm saying? But I've been taking care of a lot of things, man. A lot of things been going on with me personally. For maybe the past two months, I've been trying to take care of personal matters as it pertains to me personally, family, finances and other situations and stuff going on. You know, so as y'all know, I just had a new addition in February. My daughter, she's beautiful. I would show her to you right now if I had her with me. But maybe I'll do that next time, so you can see how she's growing. And it's been a lot, you know, having that additional addition to the family and then adjusting and, you know, pitching in more than what I normally do, well, extra, because I do pitch a lot, you know, do a lot. But a little more than I do additionally because of my daughter here, my Yeshia's been doing a great job with her. And you know, the kid's been off from school, you know, spring break and everything. So it's been a lot, it's been a lot. Then I've been transitioning as far as work as well. So I've got some new contracts that I'm working with also that I'm transitioning to and that some I've already begun. So there's a lot going on in that realm. And then if y'all have been following maybe the past week, and especially on social media like Instagram or Facebook, you'll see some pictures I posted up of a Passover event that I was invited to speak at. I didn't really publicly announce it because I wasn't given the green light to do so by Kingdom Priest. Shout out to my brother Justin Hicks, he's the brother who invited me out to their Passover to speak, it was a speaking engagement. And that's something that I also do, right? Speaking engagements, right? I do them whether I record them or not. I do speaking engagements every year, right? And if anybody wants to request me as a speaker, feel free to let me know. Also, I've been getting a lot of requests for people who want to do weddings and need funerals done. As y'all know, I've done a funeral last year for a good brother who passed away. That's here on the channel as well. So I will start in late spring to begin to officiate weddings and funerals and/or any speaking engagements, you know, if you're interested in having me come out, talk to you for, do an activism event or speak on a subject matter in regards to our Israelite culture, identity, etc. Or debate, you know what I'm saying? Let me know. Email us at kingdomharbinger@gmail.com. kingdomharbinger@gmail.com And I will take care of all the marketing and promotion and stuff for you as well. And yeah, yeah, yeah. So a lot of stuff on my plate, you know, I got some time right now before it gets a little busy in my household, just to check in with y'all, see how you're doing, give you some updates and stuff like that. Also, anybody out there, if you do have a business now, I'm gonna begin starting them by the end of this month. Going into May, I have about three businesses queued up that I need to display and showcase on this channel and various social media channels. But if you do have a business and you want to give it as much exposure as possible and you want to do us through a channel, we will get it done for you for free. We're extending that free period where there's no fees, right, that we're gonna charge. And we'll just come out and just promote your stuff at no cost, right? Because we only as good as those who are standing beside us. So if I'm successful and I'm moving forward and progressing in life and I'm the only one and nobody else is there around me doing that, then is that really success? My success is measured on the impact and advancement and progress of those who are around me. If I encounter somebody, the indelible mark that I leave on them is a measurement of my success if that mark leads them to progress and advance in life, right? If it doesn't, then either I failed or that person is a case that I simply cannot help or assist, right? And that's how I measure my currency. That's how I measure my worth. My value is on the people and lives and situations and environments that I shift, change into a more positive, progressive direction. So even if I'm not here on the screen, I'm doing it behind closed doors, right? So I just want to make sure that you guys understand that, maybe give you little nuggets of wisdom for yourselves to absorb, etc., right? Also, as you can see, I created a new stream starting soon, intro. Hopefully y'all enjoyed it. If y'all liked it, hit one. If not, I'll scrap it and do something different. But I also have a closing as well, so hopefully you enjoy that closing as well. So I've been working a little bit, you know, behind closed doors as well. And upon mentioning Passover, everybody knows that Passover, I live in bread. Some people are celebrating I live in bread this week, some celebrated Passover last week. And some are doing it when that new moon hits on April nineteenth, right? So KHM, we put our calendar out there, so if you guys are interested in how to restore your culture back to the ancient pathways, then the best way to get an introduction to that is through our calendar. If you want to access our calendar, the link is in the description below. Just click the link in the description below, just scroll down. Look for the link for the calendar, click on that and get you a calendar if you don't have it, right? It's good until next year. I think it's good until what, next February? If I'm mistaken, the next March, something like that. And you can use it not just for the feast days, but we also have the Gregorian calendar on it as well. So if you want to use it for a civil calendar, you can do so as well, right? So last week I went out to Pennsylvania, outside of, on outskirts of Philadelphia. I was in Norristown, I think it was, in Jeffersonville's where the event was at, the Monaco. And you know, that was a beautiful Passover. Those of you who've seen the pictures, I didn't post any on the community thread here on YouTube, but it is on Facebook and it is on Instagram. So if you're on Facebook and Instagram, then you probably saw it. However, I took a, some video, right? I took some video coming into the venue and I took some video of the behind-the-scenes interview. And then I shot footage of my speaking engagement, right? So I shot what I could, what I was allowed to do because it was not my event. So I just recorded enough highlights for you guys to have. And if y'all checked out or saw the video, if you didn't see the video, go back and check out that message that I did. Let me tell you a little something about that before we proceed real quick. So when I got there, shout out to Justin, when I got there, I was in a hotel and I was finishing up the message I had and then me and him had a conversation. And he said, "Hey brother, I'm gonna let you know, there's gonna be some Christian brothers out there and sisters." I said, "Where?" He said, "Yeah," he said, "about, you know, twenty, twenty-five percent is gonna be Christians." I'm like, "Oh, okay." So I didn't know that initially. So I said, "Okay, say less," you know what I'm saying? So we hung up and I scrapped my original message and I drew up one in about an hour. Then got washed up, got dressed and headed right to the venue, you know what I mean? So what you see is me doing something last minute, like off the whim from scratch. But my intention in regards to that video, because y'all didn't know this backstory, was because there were Christians there along with a bunch of Israelites that was gonna be there. I didn't want to alienate them, but at the same time, I wanted to incorporate them right into this cultural phenomenon that they're witnessing firsthand. Some of them were there for the first time, taking in Passover. See, I think the problem is, we beat up on Christians if they're not where we at. We don't meet them where they're at and we wonder why we can't win that soul. Scripture says, "He that saves a soul is wise." So you can't win those souls because you don't know how to meet people where they're at. So I decided to create a message to meet them where they're at and draw them in. "Through loving kindness have I drawn thee." And sometimes that loving kindness has to be a creative inventive way to put forth correction, right? And to reorient a person back onto the right path or even orient them if it's their first time. So if you're taking in Passover, you're here with us, this is a prime time to deliver this message. So I said, "Okay, what's the focal point of Christians? Jesus." Well, let's show these Christians that Jesus kept Passover. So y'all coming here to take Passover, you're walking in the footsteps of Yeshua, of Yahweh Shai, of Yehoshua. Y'all are doing that. So not just leave them there to say, "Okay, Jesus kept the Passover. Why did he keep the Passover? Brought them back to Exodus twelve." Once they got into that, then I said to them, "Now why is Jesus called the Passover Lamb of God?" And we went into that message. And then that's where it cut off, right? I lined them up all the way into all the points to show why Jesus is considered typologically and symbolically as a motif or theme that he is considered a Passover Lamb, not literally, right? And I gave him that concept by correlating his life as later in the narratives of the Gospels to the Torah in Exodus twelve. And then the brother had said something prior that towards the end of that video, if you watch it on YouTube, that I picked up on, he said that a lot of times us today, when we eat that Passover lamb, it don't mean nothing to us. He said something profound. But then he says, "But the people back then, they lived with the lamb." They was connected to the lamb. The lamb played with their kids. The lamb came to them when there was a need. When they needed to shear the lamb, they got wool from the lamb. The lamb sometimes ate with them. Pastorless had to work with them and speak with them and they had to know his voice day by day. And when that time came, that lamb, they had to fatten it up for three and a half days to prepare it for slaughter. See, the purpose of these offerings, the purpose of the blood of the Passover lamb that allowed that entity to pass or skip over, which is a similar cognate to Abraham being an Hebrew, they're similar cognates passing over. The Tygides, Euphrates, and coming into the land and be called one who has passed over, Hebrew, that's what he was called. So now the children of Israel who have that experience, that passing over moment, they encountered it when they was in Israel. So they live with the sacrifice, fatten it up and have to slaughter the sacrifice. The purpose of this is because when you have things that are your sustenance and then becomes part of your family. Imagine having to slaughter your dog or your cat. And imagine having to do that every time you broke the commandments that required a sacrifice. Something that you live with. See, y'all not living with that Passover sacrifice. So you're disconnected from it, just a piece of meat, some mutton, some slab of meat. But if you live with the sacrifice, the disciples live with Yeshua, who allowed himself to be martyred for the sake of bringing Israel back to the Father so he can be the high priest, so that way he can bring those who give up their lives and take on his and be able to give them a work to do on the earth to become these royal priesthood. Somebody catch that. But if you missed that message on YouTube, the portion I put on YouTube, watch it. But if you want to watch the full thing, I have it all on Patreon. It's about an hour and four minutes long. So all you get on the YouTube is twenty-seven minutes, but if you want the whole hour and four minutes, which is good meat, sign up for the Patreon, www.patreon.com/DivineProspect. All the details are in the description below. Now unfortunately, because it was at the end of the night when I was doing my message, the videographers and photographers all left. Before they left, I added one of the videographers, "Hey, please set up my camera." So he set my camera up, he was recording me while I was going in. However, the camera cut off in the last five or seven minutes, I think the last seven minutes of the message. But fortunately, on the Patreon, in the description of the post, I added the two scriptures that I read and what I expounded upon, right? So I showed you the equivalent of the blood being posted on the lint of the door and how that correlates to what's today for those who follow in the footsteps of Yeshua. And after that message, the Christians came up to me and they said, "Brother, I never heard it like that before. I was never intrigued to go to Torah until right now. I'm gonna go do it as soon as I get home." This message needs to be repeated for my congregation, for my brothers, my sisters, my uncles, my grandparents, my associates, my coworkers. All praise to the Most High. I don't get nothing. What did Yeshua say? "Let your light so shine before men..." That what? "They may see your good works and glorify your father in heaven." All glory to the Most High Yah. Okay, also I added a new blog on the Patreon, www.patreon.com/DivineProspect. And on that blog, I'm talking about how to identify what season you're in. If you were to look at the moon, how would you know if you're in the spring season or the fall season? What do you look for? You might have seen that on the community thread, I have that post up there. The objective is to find methods to educate. Now unfortunately, I'm not able to push out as much content like I used to until things get settled with me. I need at least another couple of weeks to do that. But when that happens, I'm churning them out. But here's the good news. You remember those lectures I told you I was gonna do in front of the camera? Well, I'm gonna do them live. Live, in an assembly setting. See, I knew y'all held it up for a reason because I perform better when there's people around because I get to see, I get to experience, I get to discern, I get to connect. It's different when you're doing it in front of a camera and looking at a chat than when you're doing it in person in front of the people and you're laboring, you're ministering, you're pouring out. See, some of that can be detected on the screen, but in person, it's a whole different ballgame. Okay, okay. All praise to the Most High Yah. Yeah, so with that being said, we was gonna have a KHM ATL Chapter Passover Event. We was gonna do it by ourselves like we did last year. Last year was great and that was our first one. Corporate one, collective one, this year, we're gonna do it in different chapters locally, but I will be live streaming it. However, we're partnering up with Hebrew Congregation of Atlanta, HGA, this year. And we're gonna have that Passover. Let me give you all the details for the Passover. All right, the Passover we're gonna be doing is gonna be April nineteenth at 7:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. And the address is 4405 Hugh Howell Road, Tucker, Georgia, 30084. 4405 Hugh, H-U-G-H, Howell, H-O-W-E-L-L, Road, Tucker, T-U-C-K-E-R, Georgia, 30084. Okay, that's where we're gonna have the Passover at. That's actually next Wednesday. Let me confirm. Yeah, next Wednesday at 7:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. So if you're in the Atlanta area and you can make it, please come out and fellowship with us. All of my KHM ATL chapter members, please make it there to that location at 7:00 PM Eastern Standard Time. If you're close to Atlanta or the state of Georgia, or you have a week's time, right? That you want to prepare to come and fellowship with us, great. We've been laboring for a couple of months trying to figure out how we were gonna do it. All the places I'd be wanting to venture, want to get were too expensive and everything like that. It's crazy. Inflation is really, really ridiculous, right? And I did not want to, at the same time, try to do it out of our pocket without having to charge anybody. See, the good thing about somebody paying in advance is to ensure that they show up. But what happened was, like last year, when people did not show up, we invited other people at the last minute who took their spot. And those people were gracious to say, "Hey Divine, I'm not gonna make it. Please allow somebody to come in my place," and I let them go. I'm saying, let somebody else come through, you know what I'm saying? But this time, we're not gonna do any of that. I just gave you the address, just come on through, right? Just come on. If you can make it, come on through. I would love to meet you. I would love to fellowship with you. Let's take some pictures, let's talk, let's laugh, let's cry, let's do whatever the case would be. At the end of the day, let's glorify the Most High Yah. And the best way to do so is to show love to your brother and your sister. How could you say that you love the Most High but yet you hate your brother? Okay. All right. So wanted to give that detail out the way. Also, I want to show you something real quick, man. Listen, 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 I'm gonna tell you like this, man. Y'all think because you didn't see me on the camera, I'm not grinding, I've been grinding. Shout out to all of our Patreon members. Thank y'all for supporting this ministry in the absence of content, in the absence of updates. Thank you to our KHM members who are still sticking with us, riding with us, because this spring, summer and fall, we going hard body. We have so many things lined up. That's why I'm grinding and working hard right now behind closed doors, so I can clear that time to put that work in. We got a lot of work to do, family, a lot of work to do. And I think the Most High will put me in a position where I can get the work done. But first, before I get to do that, I gotta work the vineyard before we can get the grapes. I gotta work the vineyard. You know what I'm saying? So shout out to everybody that's been supporting KHM, that's been supporting me, Divine Prospect. Thank you for all of our Patreons, KHM members, and all you who've sent donations outside of Patreon and being a member. Thank you so much. Those who sent prayers, words of encouragement, people who just checked in, said, "Divine, are you okay? Do you need anything?" Right? Do you need anything? We have our number available right there in the chat. We have an email available right there in the chat. You can reach out to me, set up a consultation, right? A lot of them, I tried to get to as many as I can. A few of them I did miss. And it's not because I did it purposely, it's because we have a lot of changes going on administratively with the organization and also just with the personal things that I have going on, you know what I'm saying? So hold on, hold on, let me put the banner up. I forgot to put the banner up. All right, here we go. Right? So nonetheless, thank you everybody for your support. I appreciate that. Thank you for bearing with me. Thank you for checking in on me. Thank you for praying for me, praying for the KHM team, KHM family. Those of you who are part of Clubhouse, make sure you have the Clubhouse app. You can get it for your iPhone or your Android phone. Download the Clubhouse app, set up an account, it's free. Look for me at Divine Prospect and follow me because I'm very active on there. I go live on there, not live, but my own room, but joining rooms at least three times a week, right? So please, it's very, it's easy for me to jump on, easy for me to do what I gotta do when I'm on there than it is to set up and do this, right? So that's why I'm on there more often because it's very easy. Setup is like no hassle here. It takes some effort for me to get prepared, to get ready and stuff like that, all right? So follow me on Clubhouse if you're not on Clubhouse already and that way you can catch more content. But what I'm trying to do now is record some of those rooms that I've done in the past, maybe two weeks. And I have about three or four different posts to put up, right? Videos to put up on Clubhouse because there've been some very interesting, crazy conversations that I gotta put y'all on to, all right? So thank you for your support. I appreciate it, family. And all the places to follow us is in the description below, all right? So look what I purchased. I got this from a ministry called Testimonies of God. Look at this. Look at this. Answering the beliefs of Hebrew Israelism. I'm gonna do a whole video of this. But the video I'm gonna do on this, right? It's gonna be coupled because what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna hit the streets of Atlanta and I'm gonna go to all the camps on the Sabbath and I'm gonna make sure all the camps have this. It's called counterintelligence. We'll make sure all the camps have this. Why? Because when people approach them and they're using these pamphlets like this to try and condemn Hebrew Israelism, they will be prepared. They said, "Oh, let me see that. Did y'all get that from this pamphlet?" Oh, we got it already. We got it already. We gotta equip the body. Let's go counterintelligence. Because they're finding any way to undermine what Yah is doing in the earth. Of course they have. They have a whole coalition against it, right? So I'm gonna go through this, right? Some things y'all know I agree with, some things you know I disagree with, right? But whether I agree or disagree with, like for example, I don't subscribe to the 12 tribe chart. I don't subscribe to the chart, but I subscribe to the fact that there are Jews over here in the Americas that's considered the minority in this country, right? I do subscribe to that, right? Outside of the publicly, the publicly recognized Orthodox Jews, okay? But I don't subscribe to the 12 tribes chart, right? That's not my subscription. However, there are brothers and sisters that do, and I want to make sure that they are aware of what's out there that's equipping the Christian church to contend with them. Number two, it says Caucasians descend from Esau and will be slaves in the kingdom. Y'all know my position on that. There will be servants in the kingdom according to what we see in the Nivaiman, the prophets, of things that have not been fulfilled that will happen in the kingdom to come. I don't propose that Caucasians, all Caucasians directly descend from Esau. That's not my position. There may be some exceptions, but that is not my position. However, I want to make sure the brothers that's out there who subscribes to this, that they're thoroughly equipped, okay? Three, Jesus was a black man, as were the Israelites. Now that, we know Jesus was a man of color. We know the Israelites are people of color. And I'm gonna showcase, when I go over this, right? I'm gonna showcase the sources. So that's what I'm gonna do, all right? Where we at? Number four, there's no Trinity. I've dealt with that countless times on this channel, right? And I'm definitely gonna go in on it again. "Mary conceived Jesus from the seed of Joseph, rejecting his deity." No, it's not a rejection of his deity. It's just that his deity did not start upon conception. But some of y'all may believe in the virgin birth, right? And that's your prerogative. I don't, I personally don't subscribe to it, but at the same time, I don't outright dismiss it because they were two, I would say contemporary oral traditions that then became in writing that was coming out of the early Ecclesia, okay? With the Ebionites and the Nazarenes and those of the way, right? Subscribing to the fact that Jesus came from the seed of Joseph and Mary. And it's not until we get the later laid-down Greek text of Matthew and Luke do we find this narrative. But we don't see Peter mentioning anything about this. We don't see James mention anything about this. We don't see Paul mention anything about this. It would be very interesting for Paul to actually speak on this matter. Why didn't he do that? But he did not. But we will address that when we do our counterintelligence on this pamphlet. Also, curses of Judar and Rami twenty fulfilled in the African-Americans. Y'all saw the debate with Gorilla Hebrew and Michael Brown? The one that I told you I was gonna give some commentary to, some brief commentary to? Oh, I still got that lined up. What's interesting is that Dr. Michael Brown said that the Jews that he descends from, that they actually went through the curses when they were in Europe. And he says that Hitler, the Third Reich, and the persecution they faced in Germany during World War Two, that was fulfillment of these curses. Fascinating. I heard him say something a little different in times past, but then I'm gonna get it to him. But that's what he says. Okay, so number seven, salvation by works, observing six hundred and thirteen mosaic laws. Remember I went over this with y'all? I did a whole post on that and I spoke about that on live stream. Y'all know where that enumeration comes from? It's not from the text. So they gotta, they gotta inherit dogma right there, but we gonna, we gonna, we gonna fall back on it. And then on the back it says, let's see if I can catch that for y'all. Other doctrinal beliefs, the doctrine of reincarnation and incarnation. The doctrine of reincarnation and incarnation, the GMS rape doctrine. The Adamic race were the people God created in Genesis. Hebrew Israelism is a heretical and a, and is a twisting of God's word. Uh, first seventy-four, seven, four to seven advise us not to pay attention to myths and energy genealogies which give rise to mere speculation rather than. Furthering the administration of God, which is by faith, but the goal of our instruction is love and from a pure heart and a good conscience and a sincere faith. For some men strained from these things have turned aside to fruitless discussion, wanting to be teachers of law, even though they do not understand either what they are saying. Or the matters about which they make confident assertions. Jesus teaches, uh, teaches that we recognize false teachers by their fruits. Do y'all want me to do a whole series on how Christianity was classically in antiquity known as occult? See that term cult and heresy is all depends on the eyes of who you're seeing it through, but, but nonetheless, nonetheless, nonetheless. Alright, so anyway, so I'm gonna do counterintelligence, hit the streets. Give this all the camp so they're aware of it. If anybody wants these, because I'm definitely not gonna keep all of these. If anybody wants these, just email us, kingdomharbinger@gmail.com. I paid money for this, right? I seen somebody show it on, on uh, it was in some Christian, some Christian in a, in a Facebook group I was in. Uh, was displaying this and then gave the link where people can buy it. I said, oh, sure, let me, let me get that and put that in my collection. And then they say according to scripture alone. But we know a lot of Christianity is based off of dogma and doctrines. And it's not, it's not a shot at Christians. I don't hate Christians. I don't, it's not like I hate dislike Christians. I don't like the egregore of Christianity. I don't like Christendom. Am I saying I don't like Christians? There's a lot of Christians I love, the members, friends, associates, right? And if you're gonna be a Christian in 2023, my opinion is read James Cone's work. Black Power and Fat Theology. If you're gonna be a real Christian. Alright, anyway. That's for our people. Anyway, just wanted to show you all that. Very interesting, okay? But like I said, May sixth, um, in HEA, I would be doing, I would returning back to doing the live lectures, all praise to the Most High. The first one I'm doing is what does it mean to call upon the name of the Lord? People hear it all the time. See, in Genesis, chapter four, don't even understand what that's about. I'm gonna deliver a profound message on that, Most High willing, alright? And hopefully you'll enjoy. Then after that, I got another one. Whose image is manmade after? The likeness of Adam or the likeness of the Creator? And then lastly, we're gonna deal with the Nephilim, the sons of God. Woo! Live lectures, baby. I'm ready for it. Give me some time to put together these dynamic PowerPoints. And uh, we gonna do the work of the Most High Yah, man. We gonna help bring in, bring in the lost sheep of Israel. Alright Yah willing, alright? Alright, and also family KHM, we have plenty of services, products and programs. Uh, please continue to patronize the ministry um, through Patreon or through the services that we offer and products we offer and programs we offer for KHM. We got the Keshab Magazine, we got the calendar, right? Uh, we have uh, the castle lot set. Uh, we have the um, the silver scroll keychain pendant. We have the uh, religious exemption letters. We have the religious accommodation letters. Uh, we have several programs, products and services that we offer. You know, we have Julie Ray Mission for credit repair. We have um, naturopathic Eden for naturopathic health consultations, right? So please continue to patronize the ministry so we can see to grow, continue to thrive and continue to take care of our people, man, because hey. Anybody can patronize these services because we take the money as aggregationalists. We go into the matrix, we grab the resources we need, and then when we exit out the matrix, coming back into our communities, we provide it to our people. We're establishing cultural economy through. Research, education and application in our communities. That's the KHM model. Culture, community autonomy. All praise to the Most High. Alright, alright, family. So um, I have a little bit of time. So um, if you have a question or two, throw it up there. Let me address it real quick, alright? Oh, you want to put the pamphlet on Patreon? Okay, yeah, I'll go ahead and scan it. And I'll put it on Patreon. So that way y'all can just grab it and distribute it. Yep. It'll be right on Patreon. Y'all seen that Clubhouse session I put up? Christians, some Christians are now saying you don't need to repent. Yo, if y'all missed that, go back and check that Clubhouse session out. Yo, when you, so recently. The session I'm gonna put up right soon is the one I was speaking with the, a Christian pastor. And this, this guy was saying that we can't keep uh, the statutes, laws and commandments. We can't keep the feast days. He's saying that all the prophecies uh, have been fulfilled like, like a preterist, right? I don't even know if he's a preterist or not, right? Which is very fascinating. Um, and we, and I went back and forth with this brother, right? And those of you who are on there, y'all heard it. It's wild. If you, and listen, what y'all can do is if you on the Clubhouse app, click on my profile and underneath you're gonna see all the replays. Of the sessions that was recorded that I'm in, it's the last one. Yo, it's, it's gonna blow your mind, man. But I'm gonna chop it up like I usually do. I'm gonna post it on here so you can get all the highlights and the good stuff. Man, Christians now, and I said to the brother, I said, yo, you know there's one thousand fifty commands in the New Testament? Do you keep all of them? And I shared that with y'all before. I shared that document with y'all, so you can go through that one thousand fifty commands. I don't know if it's on Patreon. I'm gonna check it. But if you want to, just email me, kingdomharbinger@gmail.com and I'll send it to you, right? Um, I want you all to see that Christians don't keep the one thousand fifty commandments. But let me show you something, right? Let me get into scripture because I don't see no questions yet. So let me jump into scripture real quick. Want to show you something. This is what I bring up to Christians, is that to Christians, yes, we're in exile, because we're in exile, there's a modification because there's no priests, there's no temple. So therefore there's a modification into what parts of our culture we can actually apply in the absence of sovereignty. In the absence of an established theocracy based on the God of Israel. So there's limitations. Deuteronomy thirty commands us that the blessings and the curses connected to keeping the commandments. And we're told in exile, he has an expectation for us to keep those commandments. So they have to be modified. That's the only way that we can be obedient and return unto him. And unless you understand the statute of commandments, you're not gonna understand why Yeshua came. And that's the message I delivered to the Christians on a Passover, all praise to the Most High. Woo! All praise to the Most High. So let's go to Hebrews real quick. We're gonna pull something up in Hebrews real quick. Right? Let's go to Hebrews. Hebrews, chapter ten, body bags, light. Hebrews, chapter ten. Alright, and again, no personal attacks on anybody. I love my people, even if you're a Christian. It's like that brother Jordan, I kept calling him brother. Don't call me brother. You ain't my brother. You see, you see what Christianity does to you? You see that? You see? Not to everybody. Some people, you ain't my brother. I said, I said, brother, listen. You may not think I'm your brother, but if I see the police beating on you, I'm gonna intervene. I'm gonna go say, oh, that, and he goes, Christian. I'm, let, let, let him get that work. That's most I judge in him. I'm gonna intervene. That's what I'm gonna do. So that's the difference between me and you. Like you don't have the love of Yah, because if you did, you would intervene and allow that action to be your testimony as to why I should be a Christian. But you're not willing to give up. He says, he says he wouldn't do it for me, but I said I would do it for him. You see the difference? Alright, let's pull this up on screen, man. Pull up on screen. I know you like to turn up. I understand. This is why y'all tune in. Let's, let's, let's get to scripture. Let me, let me, let me bring it down or not. Let's get to scripture, alright? And also let me know if you want me to do a video, a separate video, a session on those one thousand fifty commands. So look, Hebrews, chapter ten, verse twenty-six. If we deliberately, and I asked the brother. On that session, we went into several things. I said, brother, do you eat uh, strangled meat? Do you eat meat with the blood still in it? I said all this to him. Do you eat meat offered to idols? Is what I said to him. He claims he didn't. No, I don't. I don't do this. I don't, alright, cool. But then he mentioned some things that he's commanded not to do in the New Testament and the brother stumbles, the brother does it, the brother, so you do these things. But let's see what scripture says. Hebrews, chapter ten, verse twenty-six. This is why grace is there, because it is the time that you're given not to sin. Even Paul talks about, not to sin, but to get it right with Yah. And do what Yeshua told the woman caught in adultery. Go and sin no more. He didn't tell her, I, I, I got you. Don't worry about it. Do live your life. Even your Yeshua says, go and sin no more. Verse ten, I mean, chapter ten, verse twenty-six. If we deliberately go on sinning after we have received the knowledge of truth, and that's what I was saying to that brother on that call. He said, oh, we can eat anything. Paul said, we can eat anything. No further sacrifice for sins remains, but only a fearful expectation of judgment and of raging fire that will consume all adversaries. Watch this. What is it correlated to? Something secular? No, to Torah. Anyone who objected the law of Moses, woo! Died without mercy on the testimony of two or three witnesses. How much more? How much more? You know, exceed the righteousness of the, how much more severely do you think one deserves? Deserves to be punished who has trampled on the son of God, profaned the blood of the covenant that sanctified him and insulted the spirit of grace. You Christians better not say nothing about no Israelites keeping the law. All of y'all breaking these commandments. And. This, 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 let's just bring up more scripture. Bring up more scripture. Bring up more scripture. That's all I want to do is bring up more scripture. Let's go to first John, chapter three, verse four, okay? First John, three and four. It's a light, it's a light, light, light bag, okay? Let me share my screen again. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Let's get, let's get right. Let's get right. Let's get right. First John, chapter three, verse four. Everyone who practices sin, practices lawlessness as well. Indeed, sin is lawlessness. Let's go into that. Alright, everyone who sins breaks the law. In fact, sin is lawlessness. Everyone who sins is breaking God's law, for all sin is contrary to the law of God. Everyone committed sin also commits lawlessness and sin is lawlessness. Whoever committed sin transgresses also the law, for sin is the transgression of the law. You see that? You see that? Y'all saying. Y'all saying the law's done away with it. Y'all said it was nailed to the cross. I don't say that all Christians are, believe in anti-nomianism, but. With that, that concept that you're coming with replacement theology, as if you're moving away the ethnic Israel and moving away the law. When Jesus says that not one Jodot tells the law, we pass it to all be fulfilled, he invoked heaven and earth. And so heaven and earth passed away. Not one Jodot of the law will pass away. Why? Because heaven and earth is invoked as a witness of the law. It's invoked as a witness. Heaven and earth is still here. So Yeshua words, you telling me that when he was nailed to the cross that he lied in advance? But y'all saying that he knows all things? He's omniscient, but yet he didn't know that he was gonna be nailed to the cross and all the laws gonna be nailed with him when he made that comment? We got Christians saying that Peter's not my apostle. That's that, that's Jordan in that Clubhouse session I put up. Because we was, we was taking him apart with Pete. Then we went into Paul. Skipping over those scriptures. Point I'm trying to make is Christians, y'all don't keep the one thousand fifty commandments. That's in the New Testament. And I just refer you what it says in Hebrews, chapter ten. Y'all doing it deliberately. Why? Because the law is to keep you at bay so that you don't do it deliberately. But if you say that we are not bound to the law, then you have the liberty to do whatever you see fit. Paul says, should, should we bind the sin? Right? God forbid. That's Romans. What do we do with this? What do we do? We have to reexamine ourselves. I'm not here to judge anybody. Matthew chapter one, chapter seven, verse one says, judge not lest ye be judged. But you can judge people on things that you're not struggling with. What do you mean by judge? You judge righteously, not by the outward appearance. Anybody can say you're a Christian. I don't care. You can say you're a Jew, Israelite, Muslim, Hindu, whatever. I don't care about that. I judge the heart condition because that's what I speak to. I speak to your soul. I'm a soul snatcher, like Shang Soon. Y'all know Mortal Kombat. Hopefully I said his name right too. It's been a while. We, we, we go for the souls. That's, that's what we're talking to. The soul, the Lev, the envious part of you. We speak to that because that's what Yeshua did. He spoke to the soul. Alright, man, I think my tenure is up for today. Okay. Alright. Um, I didn't even see the chat. I don't know what's going on. Um. Let me see. Y'all got some question? Okay, okay. Listen. Tie my hands behind my back and force me to do a freestyle Friday. So I could begin to answer these questions for y'all, right? I would love to answer the questions for y'all. But I know that my time is about to expire soon. I just want to do a quick check in. Please hold your questions if you got it. And you can definitely share it. Like I said, please support the ministry by clicking on the links in the description below and support our products, goods and services. Um, and programs and also support me, Divine Prospect, so I can have the R and D resources so we can continue to get into this stuff, continue to purchase stuff like this. Right? Do counterintelligence and all this other stuff, right? By supporting the Patreon, www.patreon.com backslash Divine Prospect. You'll see it scrolling on the screen at the bottom and you'll also see an description below. I've added a blog to it. I put the full length video of the Passover message on it, which I think you'll enjoy. Um, and plenty more stuff coming to both YouTube, Patreon and on Instagram. We have a membership function. Sign up our membership on Instagram is two ninety-nine and I will be continuing to put exclusive content on there as well that you will enjoy, that you won't find even on Patreon, right? Um, so continue to support the ministry. We have a lot of work to do, a lot that we're looking to do, a lot we're looking to accomplish because the kingdom drawth nigh. And we don't have time to waste. There's a lot of work that needs to be done in our communities. Because we have to prepare the people to receive Yah and have them prepared so he can receive them as well when the time comes. But we're not sitting here gazing in the sky waiting for the clouds to crack open. Not doing nothing like that. Getting the work done. The disciples asked Yeshua, when are you gonna restore the kingdom? That's not for you to know. Go and be my witnesses, man. Get that work done. So their focus wasn't in head in the clouds. Their focus was here in the earth. Where the lost sheep is at. Ten my sheep, feed my sheep. If you have that agape or love. If you have Ahava, if you truly love the Yah, you will do it to the least of those of us. I want to make sure that y'all are on point and that y'all oriented properly. Shout out to all the family in the chat. Sorry I didn't get to shout everybody out like I normally do. This was just a pop-up session. Uh, that I had a little bit of time to do in between work and my family being here at home. Um, this is my gift to y'all. I know it's been a while since I've been on, on live. Thank you for your support. Again, I truly appreciate y'all. Much love to y'all. Continue to support the ministry, the Patreon, continue to, to, to call and to schedule appointments, talk one-on-one. Please continue to pray for me, my family and KHM. Lift this up in your prayers. Please continue to sing your words of encouragement, right? That's the best currency is love. People think it's money. No, salvation is free, but ministry costs. So to sustain the ministry, you do need money. Right? Because the scripture says that money answereth all things in regards to the secular things. So ministry, you have to work through the secular realm. But salvation is the spiritual realm is different. But they're coupled together and they have to work one-on-one. And the workman is worthy of his reward. Do not muzzle the ox as it treads the grain. That's scripture. But all this stuff about tithing, so that's another conversation. And this Easter, yeah. We got the Easter t-shirts. So if you want the Easter t-shirts that we were selling like two years ago, that brings out the truth. In regards to this stuff, let me show you that real quick. Y'all can still purchase some, right? You can still wear them, right? Just refunds is still Easter season. And or have them for next year. Let me bring the shirt out real quick for y'all and I'm about. And don't forget, we also got t-shirts. Get this camera in there. Come on camera. There we go. Alright, don't forget, we also have plenty of t-shirts as well if y'all interested. This right here, for those of you who are new. Jesus did not resurrect on Sunday. See that? Matthew twelve forty, three days and three nights. Three days plus three nights, right? Cancel resurrection Sunday. You know, Christians saying, oh, it's not Easter because you're marrying to Easter and all that. We not, we don't celebrate Easter, but cancel resurrection Sunday. Alright? There we go. Oh, and Easter means Passover in the Bible. Acts seven four, and when he had apprehended him, he put him in prison and delivered him to four uh, quarterians of soldiers to keep him in tenant at the Easter to bring him forth to the people. Easter is English and we got Pasca in the Greek, which is Pesach in the Hebrew, and that means Passover. Okay. Okay. I'm sorry. Let me get off my soapbox. Christians, I love y'all. Welcome. If you're watching this, welcome to the family. You're already family if you're watching this. Whether you love or hate me or the word that's coming forth, it is what it is, but the truth is what the truth is, and a truth will stand. And at the end of the day, if you yield to the truth, it will set you free. Ain't no chains on me no more. No strings from no puppet master pulling on me. All praise to the Most High, man. Okay. Alright. Being my best behavior. I love you, family. I'm gonna tap out. I'll see y'all again sometime this weekend, either Friday or Saturday evening. Stay tuned. If I don't make it those days, I'll try to do next week, do another session like this. And so I can get back on my regularly scheduled program. But in the interim, thank you for your support. Much love to your family. If you need anything from us, because we're here to serve, email us at kingdomharbinger@gmail.com, alright? Love your family. Thank you for watching. All praise to the Most High Yah. And praises to his servant Yeshua bar Yosef. And I'm out, family. Love y'all. Peace and shalom.